Yeah, go ahead. I'd like to call this special meeting in the township board trustees to order on Thursday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four at nine thirty a.m. for the purpose of a work session. Well, the role Asher is an excused absence. Engelmann?
Here.
Sweattaker. Thank you, guys, for coming. Appreciate your time. And we're holding the meeting here today because we want to talk about this as well. We'll go into executive session later for that.
Okay.
I would like to hear from you that you guys had a meeting after the chief left. Trustee Asher felt that it was a bit much at that time for me to come over. That's why I didn't come over. I wished I had, but I'd like to hear, you know, what concerns you have because I haven't heard anything since I've been here.
Um, so I know there were a couple of things. One was, and again, this is, you know, by viewpoint, was in regards to that, the big three recent fires. Probably one of the largest fires in police history that we've had. Nine fire departments there. That immediately after it happened, she she frozen by the time it typed up an email to all three trustees explaining the event that happened. Giving accolades to the police department that for help, their help, our fire department personnel. They made a great stop to it. And from what has been said was the only thing that came about that entire incident was questions about a fence being cut. And, you know, many people's viewpoint on the fire department side, they just stopped almost multiple millions of dollars from being lost to the other businesses. And there's almost like there's a question about, you know, a couple hundred dollar section of fence being cut so we can get hose and manpower through so that that what I see from that is that, you know, it's almost like, you know, it's almost like an appreciation thing. The guys worked really hard at this fire. And then there's just the question about, oh, just strictly about fence and that's it compared to the rest of this fire that, you know, victory, yeah, that's a significant loss there, but there's two other businesses within that building that they prevented that fire from going further than the building. So that that was one thing. The next thing was in regards to that, that open burn complaint that we were dealing with, Kellogg. With with that, you know, that was a situation, you know, we get, I don't know, what would you say, probably twenty of those every year, at least twenty twenty burn complaints a year that we go out, our guys go out, they use their discretion and take a look. You know, see if it's a nuisance, if they're burning trash, whatever it whatever it may be. And that day, I had one of my lieutenants who I have full faith in handling something like this in charge, he went out there, checked it out, saw that there was, you know, some wet green stuff that was what was causing more smoke, which is what happens. That's why in the in the burn regulations, it says, don't put green stuff, it's got to be dried, dried out wood. Told the gentleman, pull it off. The guy pulled it off. Everything else was dried wood with, you know, in a pile. It was branches. It wasn't like huge logs where yesterday we had one that was fifty by fifty logs. That one was, okay, yeah, that this needs to go out because it's between two houses. This one was sitting back, he uses discretion and then, you know, you just feel like then more questions came about that where, you know, when it was explained, you know, it was explained what we did, well, that it was handled. But then more questions came about that. It was almost like, you know, like a feeling like, we can't go out, use our discretion and do our job without, you know, kind of be a step. So that's that's the two viewpoints there. Another thing that there was, obviously, earlier on, when we first became trustee, we found out through two other fire chiefs that there was discussions going on about a regionalization without our fire chief even being involved in the discussion. You know, and the way we found out about that is from the two other jurisdictions fire chiefs that say, hey, we had this conversation. And so that it almost, it, to me, like, and from chief, I know from chief Rosenbaum's viewpoint, you know, that almost feels like a blind side, like, why are we not being involved in that? If that conversation is happening, why are we not involved in that conversation? Because that does affect our membership and affects my hard workers. I mean, these guys bust their butts and to find out, you know, when stuff like that comes about that, hey, we're looking at, you know, there's talks of looking at regionalization or there's talks of looking at LST to outsource our EMS when guys bust their butts to, you know, provide an exceptional service to our township. And it's proven, I mean, we've had we've had multiple saves. I know a couple of months ago, there was a cardiac arrest that walked into our station to thank our guys. Like, our guys go above and beyond for this township. And when discussions like that get brought up, guys feel like, well, what are we, what are we doing wrong that this is even being looked at? Another another issue that I I kind of personally had, when we met to go over the inspections and stuff, and you said, hey, you know what, you mind if I tag along? And I had recommended like, hey, let's go, let's go to Aldi's warehouse because, I mean, that's Aldi's Warehouse and Opportunities Parkway. That's our, probably our two highest hazards in this township with with what's being stored there. They have ammonia, all these. And you you were specifically asking stuff about banking commons, which made me feel uncomfortable because now there's there's, we know there's there's ties, you know, I've lived in this township for thirty years. We know there's there's certain ties to banking commons. And when specific questions like that get brought up, it almost make, from my viewpoint, that almost makes me feel like you're you're trying to put my fire inspectors in the middle of an alternative agenda than them just going out and do their inspection jobs. Because that's what they do. They go out, they do their inspections, they handle their business. If they find if they find complaints or if they find violations, they they give notice to the business owners. They have a thirty day correction notice that they they give the business owners. My inspectors will go out, follow back up in thirty days to see if those corrections are made. So, you know, that's in that situation, I did, I I felt uncomfortable and I felt like that was a just a more a more personal situation than a business situation of us going out and just doing our inspections.
And I, to piggyback off that, I'm an inspector and the state of Ohio Fire Marshal's Office would not appreciate that one bit. If you want to voice a complaint and call the fire department, go through that type of way. As a civilian, not as any type of counsel, trustee, anything like that, you have to follow the correct steps to do. Just like anyone else, like if someone, say Sean was on his off day and he walked into the Donut Shop and he saw bleach being stored, I don't know.
Improperly.
Improperly or like propane tank that's out unchained or something, whatever. He could call it, but he won't call as a chief, he'll call it as a civilian and then it will work her way up. It's just how it works. Like, the state of Ohio, like the Fire Marshal's Office would not put up something like that. That's you can't just target one place, more or less. But it's extremely.
And I encourage you to speak freely. Whatever you've got to say.
Oh, no, no, you can go. I'm just piggybacking off that, just to clarify that.
Yeah, so that was, from my standpoint, that was one that that did bother. And, you know, Chief Rosenbaum was was made aware of that. I didn't have any further discussion after that. You know, at one point, we were we were going to eventually meet with yourself and the zoning inspector and go over our inspection stuff. But it just it 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 just didn't, it didn't feel right that a, you know, we were, that a specific business was being brought up to go look at. To where I had recommended some of our high hazards in our township. And I think banking commons is probably the least of my concerns from a fire, from a fire standpoint, because
That is extremely up to code in many ways.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, Opportunities Parkway, a couple of weeks after that, we had a fire there. And there was nitrous bottles and sludgeing tanks all blowing up as our guys were inside. Those those are what I look at is stuff like that. Aldi's Warehouse, like I said, we've had, in his, in history, we've actually had a call that there was an ammonia leak there that we had to do in evacuation like that. Ammonia is a serious thing. Waste water plant, they have chlorine. We had a chlorine incident there not too long ago. So we have a lot more, lot more hazards from a fire department standpoint to look at then. And we do do our inspections of every business in this township. And you saw our board, we have our list going, you know. I I just, like I said, I the important one, I had stressed the important important ones and then just another business was brought brought up. And, you know, hindsight looking in, we all know, we know that building, who's the owner and, you know, I'm not, I don't want to get in the middle of politics or, you know, personal things. That's that, that's not my job. That's not me. Me as a chief, I am here to make sure my department staff is running adequately. My guys are taken care of and I'm doing what we need to do for our our community and for you guys. That's my goal. So, you know, when when stuff like that gets brought up, it's just, you know, it's almost like now, it's like toes are being stuck. You know, it's like, almost like there's there's, there tends to be that belief that like, or view that there's like, there's a lack of faith in the chief to actually run his fire department. So that's that's where I see, go ahead, guys.
No, just to, and that's that's kind of what we're struggling with right now, and we have been, is finding adequate staffing. We've always, I guess, joked that we're a stepping block for a lot of guys entering this career. And it's not a bad thing. It's not a big thing on us. It's it's great.
Yeah.
Because for every three that we get out and get a full time job and enter this career, if we get one of them back and retain them, that's that's good. So it's always been a struggle with keeping this place not a revolving door. But between the political atmosphere, losing the chief, the the stepping on toes is what people are seeing right now. It's really hurting us. So it's the questions that are coming back to us are, you know, is this place worth it? You know, the pay's not great. We are a combination of guys trying to get into this career or guys donating their their time off away from their family just for whether it's it's mad money, killing time, whatever it is, extra experience, they know a guy, they have a family member that live in Hinckley. And all those are reasons that we have the people that we have. But at what point is it, this isn't worth it? And that's what we're struggling with right now. And it's, the questions are like, what did we do? Where we, why do we feel like there's a target on our back? You know, why are all of a sudden our trustees questioning our common sense on a call? Why are they more worried about a little bit of township property versus the the kudos that should have came? We don't, we don't need the pat on the back, but like, that should have been a pat on the back. Not, why did you do a little bit of damage to, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like, why, why does it seem like we're the target instead of, you know, what, what did we do? And I don't have an answer for him. You know, why, why did seemingly the the chief get pushed out, whatever it is? That's what's coming back to us and that's what we're trying to step right now. And we don't have answers for him other than we got to grind and we got to do our job. And then on top of like, and now we're hearing that, you know, some of the newer guys, we were going to get outsourced. All of it's, I think that's squashed now, but it was something they were looking at. So it's a combination of everything coming out at once. And, you know, we're just trying to put the tourniquet on it and and stop people from walking out. Because at this point, they're looking at it like, between the political atmosphere and whatever's being looked in the fire department, this ain't worth my time. So that's where we're at right now.
Going off what Johnny said, I'm thinking about quitting. I have no reason to be here. These two are, they live here. I don't blame them. They don't want to see where they live, their fire department go downhill. Because when they call nine one one or say Johnny's at his full time, or you're at your full time and something happens at home, God forbid, you you want a good staff showing up or properly staffed to show up and help your family. I have zero ties here. It's getting to the point for me where this is ridiculous. This is some small town crap to me. The bickering back and forth, like, I worked for the city of Cleveland. Even there's enough issues out there, nothing, this is worse than out there. Like, this is getting out of here and it's extra stress. Guys don't want to come to work. I took a three month leave. I had stuff going on. I don't know if I'm coming back because of this. It's not worth nineteen fifty an hour as a lieutenant to deal with this. And I could go work somewhere else and be a blue shirt, show up, make thirty dollars an hour. Like, it's not even about the money. It's just about being treated with respect at times. We had a great chief that was in there. And I don't care what anyone says, more or less, you guys ran him out. The chief before that got ran out. Chief before that got ran out. So who says if Sean becomes a chief, possibly next go around? They're not going to run Sean out or he'll just lose it. So something needs to change here, like, and this isn't a Bastard Police Department or anything like that, because they are great men and women that work there. But like, how come our cops are up here on this payroll and the fire department's here when we run twice as many calls as them? When we're showing up at a time of need, just like they are. But they're making these big bills, we're making these little tiny, especially for our full time, for starting. I get it, like, this is stepping stone into progressing the fire department, but like that contract, that you can't live off that. That's food stamp level nowadays. After pension and everything's taken out retirement, what do you think it's overall be? No.
That's the base when I was there when I started Maple.
Yeah. So, but that was many years ago.
Ten years ago.
Yeah. So, so, but it's just, we're trying to move forward and I feel like the fire department's always just kind of been put on the back burner. And maybe we allowed it as the fire department for a few years, but like, I don't know. We're trying to get better people in, we're trying to get the payout. But pay comes, like Johnny said, like, maybe we retain one of every three people. Maybe we could get a career guy that will come from another neighboring department that's been doing this for ten years that goes, you know what? Since you're paying X amount now, I'm going to come down and give you four eight hours a month. Or we don't really have to train that person. We don't really have to do much with them. They already know the job.
And so we did, you know, what was it, last year that we had that, the meeting with trustee Asher?
Yes.
We as a department, had a meeting with her to discuss some, discuss issues. And the topic of pay was brought up then. And, you know, looking at the comparison of, you know, other departments. We had people, we had people that went through our entire process and then didn't take our job because they took a part time job in Richfield who's paying more. Granger Sharon is paying more now. The Dino City pays more. Front of Hills pays more. But we brought that that topic up last year. And the answer we were given was, well, no, the only thing we can do is two percent and that's it. And like, we were trying to explain, we need to be competitive pay. The answer we're given was, no, we don't need two percent. And you know, and to that, you know, with the way things are today, like two percent of nineteen dollars an hour, it's twenty cents.
Yeah.
You know, twenty cents or whatever.
Throw me a quarter.
Guys must look at it, that's more of a, that's like on the Facebook, because they, you know, they want to be here, they they're trying to make it. They want to be here. They they actually, a lot of guys love working here, but it's, they're, when they're taking the time away from their families, they're like, I can't justify working here for nineteen dollars an hour, taking the time away from my family, whatever. But that it almost seemed like that discussion kind of fell on deaf ears last year. And then now, you know, we're in that the situation now where I, as the interim, like now I'm seeing the numbers. That's what, we'll talk about that, you know, we'll talk about that later. But, you know, I don't understand, I'm looking at it like, how could we have not at least done a little more of something? And I could have probably kept, I can't, I could probably have kept five other employees that have since, that have left within those past years.
He lost some really good.
Yeah.
Really good firefighters and paramedics.
One open was directly related to that. He said that if my wage doesn't offset my childcare, how can I make the decision to work here?
Couple of them wrote that in.
No hard feelings, I give you.
Yeah, a few of them, their resignation dealt with pay. It dealt with pay.
Right, pay notwithstanding, because we will.
Yeah, we'll discuss that, yeah.
What are the other issues that are out there?
The almost like a lack of support. There's a feeling of lack of support. And again, this is, I don't want to get into, you know, support of this person versus that person, whatever, but trustee Augustine, when she was here, she would be at in our station maybe once every couple of weeks checking in on us, hey, how are you doing? Anything you guys need, whatever. That doesn't happen anymore. I'm going to be honest, I, you know, I I think I've seen all three of you guys, probably, I can count on one hand how many times I've seen you in the station. Like, you know, even just to check in, like, hey, how are you guys doing? Or even a phone call, like, hey, you know, how's everything going? Anything you guys need? It's 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 little stuff like that, you know, not a phone call of, hey, you know, I need you to go do this. It's more just like a like a check out. It's a communication thing. I think there is a, I think there's a lack of communication. There's there's a disconnect from down there to here, without a doubt. I think that is an issue. I think that that is a big issue. And honestly, that could solve some of the issues that have happened.
I was going to say.
If there was a communication. And I explained, so we'll go back to the that the open burn complaint, right? And you called, you called the fire station initially asking for the chief, the chief was out of town that day. He went down, he had gone down to Cincinnati with his sister. You had asked who's in charge, the town town said, hey, I am. But when somebody calls our fire station and says, hey, my neighbor's burning this, whatever, all right. And we put this on Facebook because we have this issue a lot. Contact the dispatch center. And that way, there's a record of it. So that way, we do know when we go back to that address. So I think that the same thing should happen is if if you receive a phone call from somebody that says, hey, I have my neighbor burning. Okay, well, hey, go ahead and call, call the dispatch center and the fire department will get dispatched out. Because like, for instance, if if
They have a direct line to us.
Yeah.
They, they
We're out of the station, we have this on.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, and there's no, yeah, our guys could be out training in the township. We might not be at the station.
We keep, we keep a track, again, in our reporting software as it's not to the extent of what PD has with the CAD system. But in our software, we do have a question, did this call come in from nine one one or or a citizen phone call? So we can track how many times, just because we need to be able to send. And an easy one that I've told people because, you know, mom needs help getting into the house, you know, coming back from a doctor's appointment, stuff like that. I didn't feel like that was a nine one one call. I understand that's, you didn't need emergency response, but you did need the emergency service. And our direct line is nine one one. Why do you want to, you're still calling the same people? And if we're outside training or, you know, fueling up the truck at the service garage, no one's answering that phone. So if we just tell people, contact nine one one because they have a direct line to us, and then it's everything's lost. So then we can't say, you know, we've been to this address before or anything like that. It helps with that. So.
With the fire department, we have a chain of command, right? So my, my lieutenants are the first go to for the firefighters to talk to if they have an issue, right? And then if the lieutenants can't solve it or they have an issue, they come to, well, they come to me as the assistant chief and then me as the assistant chief go to me as the chief. So, but, uh, we have a chain of command. I I feel like the same thing should happen from the top going down, right? So if there's an issue that you have, I I feel like everybody pretty much has right now, maybe has my cell phone number, call my cell phone. Hey, hey, chief, you know what, I got this phone call, this came in. Okay, come, all right, fine, we'll get that handled. And then I can, you know, contact the lieutenant or whoever's in charge on duty for that day, say, hey, you know what, go check this out, right? And I put it in this perspective when we had a meeting with trustee Asher. If somebody calls and says, hey, somebody's fired up, you know, guns and, you know, and it's bothering me, it's super late, whatever. Do do you guys as trustees just call the patrolmen that are on duty and say, hey, go handle this? Or do you guys call the police chief and say, hey, I received this complaint from a citizen? Whatever, that, it was almost like that's, we're kind of breaking the chain of command that way. If we're just calling, you know, calling directly to the station, like, hey, I need you to go do this. And it doesn't get filtered through the the command staff. But then on, but as Johnny said, the biggest thing, and we we are trying to emphasize this because we've had so many people call just to the station to report, I, there's smoke coming from a house, the barn across the street's on fire. Like, I I I kid you not, we've had people just call the fire station.
They must not read that.
Look up our fire station number to tell us that the barn across the street is on fire. We're trying to put this emphasis to the, our community to, hey, call, call the dispatch center so we can get dispatched out.
Patrolman is going to.
I feel that same thing should happen even if a citizen were to call you guys and say, hey, there's this massive fire going or, you know, I I whatever, you know, something that's that's could potentially be a hazard and or anything that should be, again, going through our dispatch center. So there is a record of it. It's on record and I can look back, I can, dispatch can even, I can ask dispatch, like, hey, have we ever been to this address before? And they'll be able to pull it up if I ask. So that's where, that's where things start to get start to become unclear because, you know, if we're, if we're doing more of like the, like a back channel approach, we're not, we're not going to always have a record of that. If if we're going to, if we're, and if it's multiple complaints that are coming in, why not have them go through the dispatch center so we have that record at all times? So that that's my feeling on that, on that situ, on a situation like that. I feel like just we're kind of breaking the, you know, we're not, the chain of command's not going back from the top down. Where it, I, we emphasize with our guys to do the chain band going up, so.
And I I think, like, going off what Sean's saying and Johnny here, um, I think this has been an ongoing issue for years. Like, this hasn't, this isn't anything new, would you say? You guys have been here longer than I have, where I feel like this has just been, kind of just been going on track since God knows when. But there's really no good communication between us with you guys.
Yeah, I would say that, like, communication just, yeah, there hasn't been.
It's no, no one's fault. It goes both ways, I guess, but.
Absolutely. I I don't disagree, like.
Yeah, I I think, you know, now's the time for both of us to change that. I think, I think things are just lost in translation at times and it's no one's fault. It's just kind of, because, I mean, our job is different from your guys' job. I mean, I'm sure if you ever have a question to ask Sean about fire stuff, whatever, he's more than willing to tell you all about it. You know, Sean's having some issue with, you know, financial stuff, whatever. All about it, or, you know, Sean's having some issue with, you know, financial stuff, whatever, and he doesn't know, he's gonna ask you guys, or, you know, so it's just. I mean, I, I think from here on, like, just better communication, you know, like, we have an open door policy, like you said, guys can stop by. You know, it's. Um, it's pretty nice, you know.
I think it'd be good to, to make that a better culture.
Mm-hmm. Does, uh, did, did he call in, or are you not able to reach him?
Nah, he's in Pennsylvania.
Do you have anything, anything else that you guys? Cause I would like to address the concerns that you did raise, um.
Go ahead.
So. First of all, relative to communication, if we don't know about a problem, we can't address it.
Absolutely.
And. I don't think that Chief Rosenblatt ever come to me. With anything during my tenure, to specifically say, here's a problem that we need to address, no complaints from you guys, nothing.
Same here.
Assuming everything is going fine, and the first I heard of anything, um. Few minutes before the last meeting, the chief came, he asked me to step out in the hallway, said he's leaving, I reacted poorly, I said, oh, let's just keep on coming. Came back into the meeting, I caught him before the meeting started, I said, chief, apologize, because he told me he was leaving to accept a. A better offer with a, an acting chief, I said, apologize, sounds like a great opportunity for you, I'm happy for you, for you and your family, I congratulated him. What I'm hearing is, that's not what he told the folks back at the station.
And.
I, but, he said, so, that, that is what it is, I just wanted you to know that I wished him well, and all the best, and. Um, like you said, the politics. When I came on board here. Trustee, well, let me, what do you think my role is as a trustee, what do you, what, what's my responsibility, do you guys have a?
Service, right? Liaison of the service and.
Reason, uh, to, well, main role is to run the township with the rest of the board.
My role is I was elected to represent the people of the community, and to take care of everything that they can to the best of my ability. To provide the best service, protection, and be fiscally responsible. And now I take that to heart, so I had a couple trustees reach out to me, talk about sharing services, one of those was fire. Brought that to the board, nothing came of it, they weren't interested, then the chief kept saying, we're having trouble staffing. We can't get, we, we don't even have an EMT on a squad at times, so they looked into doing other. What they could do to fix that. In that same time, I'm having a discussion, by the way, one of those trustees for the fire district. It's not like it was something, no, I've known this guy for thirty-five years, okay, he's a good friend. He's trying to help. I also have another friend, who's fiscal officer in Granger Township, and she said. You know, here's what we do, why don't you look at this, it's a fraction of the cost, and, you know, they contracted out for fire service. And, uh, LST. Didn't want to do that, so, uh, when the chief was at the meeting, he gave some proposals, and I asked, did you look at the Granger model? He did not, he was supposed to, as a leader, it's, it's really, really difficult sometimes to be a leader, cuz you have to have some. Difficult discussions, but that's what they are, they're discussions. You have to look at what's best for the community. If we could have done that, we would have had two paramedics twenty-four seven. Own equipment in our station, for a fraction of what we're spending to staff up, to try and meet that, but we couldn't even meet that. So we're not, we don't have paramedics or EMTs on, on the unit sometimes when we're responding, that was my concern.
We always have a medic.
Back then, they did.
I'm talking now.
Now, that, okay, but I'm talking about when I brought this, that, you know, you're, you're saying, I'm trying to disband the department, that wasn't it, I'm trying to do what's best for the community.
I, I'm not meaning to cut you off, but if that was the discussion of two years ago, we always had paramedics. Always.
Again, I get my information from the chief. All right, so that, again, that's, you know, if that's an issue, you, you guys have the opportunity to look at the meetings as well, you know.
Uh, I, our guys do, our guys watch the meetings, and that's where a lot of questions come, I, I have to play the bumper, cuz a lot of guys have questions.
That notwithstanding, the board decided, no, we weren't gonna do that, and it's fine, it's my job to bring it. If I'm made aware of it, I have a responsibility to this community to bring it to the board, I can't just disregard it. So that, that's where I'm coming from, um. And I know that in this meeting, you guys talked about, you feel like I disrespect you, and I, that couldn't be further from the truth. But after that meeting, without having talked with me, anybody. The Fire Association elected to send out a letter bashing me on that. I'm a big boy, but I felt disrespected, but it didn't affect my job, didn't affect how I felt about you guys.
After which meeting was that letter sent?
That was, the, the. After the LST discussion.
Oh, I'm, I'm.
You know.
I, I was making sure this wasn't something recent.
No, no, no.
That was our last meeting.
Yeah, I remember that was.
Well, I only, I only bring it up because that's what was brought up.
Right.
By you folks when you met.
He's no longer with us, yeah.
Um. The Kellogg fire.
Yes.
A resident calls me. And says, look, this guy had been burning next to me for thirty days now, I can't even open my windows, I can't breathe. It, it, it's, okay, I'm not gonna tell a resident, you know what, try calling this instead, I reached out to the chief. Called, and actually have a, a call a lot, I called, I called this cell first, no answer, I don't care about that. Sometimes my wife calls me, and my phone doesn't even ring, I get it, I called the number I have for his office, the chief's number. Which is what I have in here, uh. Whatever number that is, and I asked for the chief, he wasn't in, and I, was that you that I spoke with then, all right. I am guilty of being curt sometimes on the phone, um, I don't know if you guys know anything about my background, do you know where I came from? What I did? Airport, I was the airport operations manager, for, uh, almost thirty-eight years out there. Um, one of my roles and responsibilities was to ensure compliance with federal aviation regulations, as part of that. Uh, we have an airport certification manual to maintain certification with those regulations, I had to do a complete rewrite of that manual. And part of that manual is also the airport emergency plan, I worked hand in hand with the fire chief out there. Developing procedures for every response imaginable. My people were first on the scene for any aircraft emergency, so. All that time out there, time is of the essence, that's where, I'm guilty of it, I, I'm curt sometimes, but. When I'm just trying to get something done, cuz I've got a lot going on, I called, sorry if I appeared disrespectful for you, there was no intent there. But I wanted somebody to go over there while it was still burning, check it out. Said, you know, let me know what you find, like, and I, so I called back, because nobody called me back, to, to get a follow-up.
Yeah, you guys called another call, right?
And that, and that's fine, but, you know, it was later in the day, it was like, uh, whatever time it was, um. I had asked about the open burn policy. That's my, my job is to look at what a resident's concern will be. So if there's an open burn policy, there's only three policies on the township website, open burn is one of them, written by the fire department. I have to think, what is a resident gonna ask me? And they're gonna say, you have an open burn policy, why aren't you enforcing it? That's why I ask a question about it, and that's why I asked you to have the chief follow up with me, which did not happen, but. I, it, if you wanna give them a pass at times, that's fine, write it into the policy, but don't put a policy out there.
I followed up with you.
That were. Not, you did.
Yes, I did, yeah, because the chief was out of town, so I was the chief for the day, cuz he was out of town.
Okay, that's fine, but I had, because I wanted to have this discussion about it, with him about the policy, and modifying the policy to. Align with what you're actually doing, we can't, we can't have something out there that the resident has an expectation that you're doing, that we're not doing.
So it. I understand that, but at the same time, that is also gonna open up a can of worms, right, I mean. If, if you, if you make a hard black and white. Yeah, yeah, okay, you, you get ninety percent of the people that follow it, you know, if you're grossly over that, obviously, we're gonna ding you, or, or whatever. Because my, my analogy, Monique, was, I used, yes, we used our policy. And I did give a pass because of certain circumstances that I would give anybody, case by case. If we're gonna say amend the policy.
Write some latitude into the policy.
Possibly, but like, my analogy would be. Your speed limit sign is thirty-five, there's no asterix to it. Certain hours will let you slide with forty-five, no. You're gonna get pulled over, if you, if, if the PD catches you and they deem it, we're gonna let you go at thirty-seven, happens all the time, right? There is a policy posted on every roadway, this is the speed. They can choose, case by case, where you, should have your lights on, where you're driving recklessly and going over the speed limit. Or.
Do you get a ticket, or are you just gonna work?
We're just letting this one go.
Yeah.
So, but, but who ca, who calls and says, that's why you pulled him over, why didn't you give him a ticket? You know who calls and says, why aren't we?
I would say, no one would, but. If they see us respond, I don't know if anybody that's called back and said, well, there's still, maybe one or two that have called back. Hey, they're still, and we'll explain to them, you know, that they're within their rights, or, you know, we deemed that it's safe enough. They're more than welcome to call back and ask us what happened, but. What are, if, they're not going out and measuring per our policy, I mean, we made a response, we deemed this is safe enough.
Okay, so my question would be then, you, so you're, should, should you have this policy?
Well.
So that is, so.
That, that's the state EPA.
Yeah, let me, let me throw example up, people who are just having a bonfire in their backyard, even on their patio or whatever, most of those aren't within code. But no one's calling in about, you could have them in your fire pit, but it's open, it's this and that, blah, 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 it may not fit the regulations.
And the majority of, of our open burns are the smoke.
Yeah, it's, it's mostly smoke, but especially here, people are burning in their yard, or whatever, but even then, like, if you look, if you really wanna get down to the standpoint, most people. We have fire pits at their house, it's not up to code, um, there's nothing you can do to enforce it, it's their personal property.
We would, we would have.
My question to you would be, do you? I, I.
We'd have to see if that would be an option.
But I, I think it was a reasonable question for me to ask, that you, you had a policy, and why weren't we enforcing it? So if the resident ca, asks me, well, isn't there a policy, why aren't you enforcing it, I have an answer for that. And that's a fair enough answer, if you say.
Sure, well, but at the same time, I, and. So I, I have no problem with your curtness, and, and, and a lot of times I can appreciate that, I, I can be that way too, but. I had informed you that I did go out, and I used my best judgment, and I, I talked to the resident, he, he was, he was very apologetic for the smoke. It had already. Practically gone away by the time I got there, it, it, it was right after the tornado, so everything was just drenched. And there was more rain coming in that day, and he was just trying to get some off, he was very apologetic, I told him exactly what to do. He had a, a built up order, I said, listen, get your activator in there, pull everything back to a smaller size, kill it for the day, lay it out, he's like, yeah, I'll lay it out. Let it dry for a couple of days, and resume later, I said, perfect, I said, using my best case, and I told him, you have a residence right here. It is gonna be within, so you gotta keep it smaller, I went over the policy with him. And he began to correct it that time, and that's what I had told you, and then you started reciting that, you know, we have a code and everything, but, but I used my best judgment. Based on what we had, and that is how we do.
I understand that part of it, but, but that's not what, what it says, and that, that's, that's where I'm concerned, is that a resident comes to me and says. We've got a policy, and they're not following it, it says he has to have an EPA permit, is, is there a permit?
So, but again. When we went out, and I, I ended up going out also, and talking to that gentleman. The lot was already cleared, he cleared that lot, he had it logged, it was shipped off by truck, all the logs. What he was burning was just the leftover branches there, which is residential waste.
Then that's fair enough, that's what I need, so, that's, that's a perfect answer for me, you know, that if I, the resident calls me back. Or I have to call them with a follow-up, I just need to have an answer from them.
And I, I, I even did a follow-up with the EPA, and I forwarded a, we forwarded that email over from the EPA that said, he was good. He just needed to reduce his shots a little bit more, because he's.
Who'd you send it to? I didn't think I saw that, anyway.
So.
But I'm just, I just want you to understand where I'm coming from.
This, this is good, this.
All right.
This is, yeah, it's just, and I, I get like, a resident, you know, they're calling in, they're complaining. If they truly have any other questions, they could call us too.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's, that's where, like, we, we use the chain of command, sometimes take a link out, is nice, because. I, I understand where you're coming from, let's get it, it's, it's your responsibility to pass the information on, time could be of the essence. A brush fire could or couldn't be, could be just, okay, let's go monitor, but. If you could have them talk to dispatch or contact us, we could be able to get a little bit more information, hand, you know, firsthand. So, may, maybe that hurt us in this situation, but.
I, I mean. You need, you need to understand, I am not inclined to put any resident.
No, and, and. But also, at the same point, you mentioned that the resident said they, they have breathing problems, and so, that's.
She, no, she said she can't eat.
Can't open up her windows.
Right, to get fresh air in.
Okay.
So it wasn't.
It wasn't a health.
No.
Okay, because a, at that point, then, yeah, that, that absolutely should be going through nine one one, if somebody, and I.
No, it was, it was a complaint about the constant burn.
And there has been people that have been burning within the regulations that we have shut down, because their neighbors next door have asthma COPD, and the smoke's just blowing straight into their house.
And, and again, that's fine, my takeaway from that is, look at this policy, modify it if you need to. And the reason that I made the call, and the questions that I asked, were relative to my role as a trustee. I did try to follow the chain of command, you can readily see that, you know, I tried to make those calls first, and, and that's fine, if I, like I said. Everybody's not always available, I get that, sometimes I call the police chief, he's my first point of contact over there, absolutely, he's not in all the time. So, I work my way down.
Yep.
I have no objection if one of the other trustees reaches out. They do it all the time, it's fine, liaison means we just, we're a primary point of contact to try and make things work for you guys. The fence cutting. Chief called me from the scene, look, just want you to know, we had a big involved fire, da, 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 he said, uh. Uh, told me everything about it, and the last thing he said was, uh, we had to cut the fence, I said. The fence by Cobak, and he's like, yeah, and I'm like, why'd you have to cut it? And the reason I ask that, again, is my role as a trustee, because we just spent a lot of money to put the fence in. A resident calls me and says, why would they cut that, I just need an answer. And the chief told me that it was because vehicles were blocking the roadway, but then, I don't know if it was you, somebody else told me. It was to get to water, run hoses to the back.
People.
First off, so, West one thirtieth was blocked, because the, the hose line had to be run from the hydrant across the street. Fourteen hundred feet up to the building, so, West one thirtieth was there.
Okay.
So apparatus could not get two opportunities far away to come up, so then they had to pull in the Cobak. And so they cut the hole in the fence to get personnel through, get hoses and equipment.
All I needed, all I needed, because somebody did reach out to one of the trustees and go, why, why were they cutting that fence? All we just need an answer to give them, they paid for it, you know what I'm saying, that's, at the end of the day, we, we all work for them. We don't, you get paid by the township, we work for all the residents.
Absolutely agree.
Acknowledges.
And, and again, maybe that's just a failure of communication. Pretty self-explanatory, that's why you need to know, but. Maybe just forthcoming and saying, you know, I just need to know in case somebody asks, I'm not questioning, cuz I think that's immediately. In the heat of things, that's how it was taken, is you're questioning me, and it's like.
But I, I don't mean to speak for the part.
I would, I would.
I would assume that's how he took it, was you're questioning my.
More so like the experience.
Interpretation of, instead of you, you questioning because you're anticipating questions from residents, it was more so, it was interpreted as. Just questioning tactics.
Then have a conversation with me, no follow-up on anything.
I I think that was something from the past, I think. Love Chief Grosso Ball, but I think he watched as what happened to the other chiefs. And, you know, when he got in and I think. I think it was almost like a a herd puppy dog feeling at times where he was scared to say something maybe, because he didn't wanna get. In trouble or whatever.
If you're in a chief position, you're a leadership role, that that's part of the job.
I just think that's just from past of dealing, I mean, I don't know, I don't know.
And that and that leads me.
Just is pretty good at communicating, we're all good and we're all communicating, I'll say that without stinking our own.
Leads me to talking about acknowledgements, great job you guys do. My personal belief is, is the department heads responsibility and I tell the chief that all, she's sent her that all the time. You got something, you bring it to the table, bring it to us and you tell the public about it. And that's what the chief should have been doing, I believe that, that's, it's not for me to reach over him to pat you guys on the back. And a pat on the back is not a bad thing, I'm guilty that I don't do that a lot either, because. At the end of the day, we're civil servants and we're paid to do what we do. But. It's good sometimes and.
It is.
I I. But I appreciate, especially the safety forces in this town, you guys do a great job. Do I say that all the time? I don't, and I'm guilty for that, I apologize for that.
Um, real quick, there was one thing that I didn't remember that we did not bring up. Was, um, inter- during the interview process for full time.
We'll get to that.
Pad in. Yeah.
There was, somebody was screaming that I thanked Columbia Gas profusely. And the reason I did that, Columbia Gas is not a civil servant, they don't, they don't owe anything to this township. And that guy that was here worked his ass off, you guys don't know about it.
Oh.
Twenty-four seven, at night, he had a baby and I'm like, why aren't you taking care of your kid? Because he's reaching out and talking with all the residents. That are affected by this and doing his best to make. That project successful, they don't, I don't know if you know, public utility doesn't have to follow any zoning regulations. And they did their best to follow our zoning regulations with relative to the setback and screening. And they, he got them to invest additional money into a nicer fence that's better for residential setting. That's why I thanked him, he made my job easier in dealing with these people and he would take those off my plate for me.
Ju- just to clarify on that one, that one. It wasn't so much like the thank you profusely of Columbia guys, the the aspect of that was. Within that week or two, multiple emails were sent out from the fire department about stuff. The within that month, whether big three, uh, there's a, and I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. Couple of other emails were sent out to the trustee board from the fire chiefs, you know, about events that have gone on. With zero acknowledgement.
And I was shocked he didn't bring them to the meeting.
So that's where that came in the play was, then it it. Columbia guest sent an email and there were like an immediate response, and so that's where. Again, the the chief at that time, he was he was like, what the heck, like, he's like, I've sent out a bunch of emails and I haven't, there's been no acknowledgement, but. Like as soon as Columbia gas sends one out, it's a boom. So that that's where that that came from. To further explain that one.
Well, and. Full circle to communication, it's I I find it very concerning that the first I heard of anything. Was in the meeting, it was right after chief resigned and went to you guys. Um, you talk about chain of command. You have issues running up the chain of command, I don't, I don't care if anybody comes to talk to me, I'll I'll talk with anybody. And if we can do something to make this better, make this township better, make the working relationship better, I'm open to that.
Yeah, I and I always, I I put the emphasis on this, is especially now as me being the interview, my job is to be. That buffer between between both, get the communication going back and forth between both. Present it, you know, bring issues between back and back and forth between. Trustees and department vice versa, that I said to me, I feel is. Is the role of a leader and of a of a department head is to be that buffer between.
About us not coming to the station. That that was. You know, I I I felt the pushback from you after I got here. I don't, you know, I went over a few times and.
We had a great conversation over the one day, you you and me were talking about rental houses and 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 everything.
But, you know, when.
We were talking about rehab and houses.
So I I I'd love to have a great working relationship, you know, where where we can do that kind of stuff, but. Again, you know, I'm talking about right after the, you know, the fire association, which is the body of that thing sent out.
Changed.
That's, I'll say that, whole situation, it is different than it was. Party involved with that situation mostly, which a lot of us had no clue. About that going on, really? Is gone, so like, we don't.
Well, it's sounds to me like a.
Some of it was.
You're not getting a lot of information that transpired.
Yes, yeah. Closed doors in someone's parents basement, but with that being said.
There were a couple other things here that Monique had noted, it's, there was a. An assertion that we were dragged dragging our feet hiring two full timers and a full timers and we lost two candidates, both of those took. Better paying jobs, better positions, so it had nothing to do. With the hiring process itself and we. Did what we needed to do for the hiring process to put it in your hands to do the processing. At that point, that that's out of our hands, we 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 moved as quickly as we could on those.
Where the delay happened on that, so we came, we came up with, we came up with a plan. For our full time, so the first, we did a first round set of interviews, it was myself, uh, one lieutenant, and then we had, um. Two fire chiefs and the Hinckley resident who's a Brunswick fireman, be a part of the interview now for the first round of interviews, brought them in. Interviewed everybody and then started establishing our our list of, you know, who who came out fast out of those interviews and, uh. From there, Chief Grosso Ball had reached out to, uh, trustee Asher about, hey. I would like to bring in six for their second round of interview with you and me and, uh. She had said, no, I would like, I would like to have the whole whole board involved. And at that time, I was, we were out of town, uh, on vacation, so we had to push that back another week. Um, to wait for you to come back in town and then come to find out then when the second, when you you guys were available. And Monique was out of town and she said, we'll just go ahead of that and. At that point, at that point, it's like, why couldn't we have just done this? The first, that that week that we were trying to do with just the the trustee liaison and the fire chief. And 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 get this going and then we could have, it pushed us back a week and I mean, I'm telling you, in a in a matter of a week. That that made a big change in our candidates because they were processed for other jobs within that.
Yeah, but they they took. Two better paying jobs, I mean, so. It's it's not likely that they would have accepted it anyway. Because that that offer would have came up before they were done being processed anyway.
But they were, they were two very hardworking employees of law department, um, they they were. Wanting to go through the entire process until it, but they they had no choice because they were then given, they took the first job offer that was given to them.
I know on the one, I could speak on the one's behalf with it, um, they were looking, like if they were out from the job, maybe they would, they said, maybe I wanna stay. They would start at Hinckley beforehand, maybe they would have stayed just because it's loyalty stuff and not have left due to the pay or whatever.
It's a department they know.
Yeah, comfortable, you know, there's not really much change, whether it's just, you know, same old, same old, same people, same policies, procedures. But, um. I don't know, I.
I think we were hoping to capitalize earlier, not necessarily would we keep a full timer. Like it's saying if we would have started the process beginning of the year, when we thought we had maybe ten ten candidates, uh, give or take. The thought I think was, maybe we could capture one or two of these bet. Better. Really good candidates that we thought fit, you know, they 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 really put their heart and soul into this place, even being a part time job. And they would have been a great fit, I think what we were hoping would capitalize on that, even if it, albeit for a shorter amount of time, not career. Which. Maybe would happen, so they could kinda, I'm paying the pension system, I'm young, now if I do leave. I got something, I can be a little bit more selective on a Strongsville or a North Rotten that's really good pay, really good structured department. Instead of. Sorry, Maple or, you know, something like middle of the road pay.
Good contract.
Oh, you, I just got to, cause you're, but the 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 two that we recently lost. They they did go to a place like that and maybe if we could have got them in. They could have been a little bit more selective and waited for the higher paying, the really good gig.
But again, it's a maybe. Maybe they wouldn't.
And maybe there.
Everybody's gonna be a maybe.
Right.
Everyone, yeah. When we all started in the fire service, there'd be, you know, you have all your credentials and everything and you'd sit down for, sorry, show up, Maple. And there'd be one spot open, there'd be three hundred guys for one spot. And you'd be fighting over, you're like, what am I doing? Why am I even trying in this career? Now, people are able to pick and choose, I could. I could work at my full time in Valley and Johnny could be like, hey, university's hiring, we offered this instead of this, and then I'd be like, oh, take our test. I could literally just lateral transfer or do whatever now, it's a different day of age, the competition is.
Either way, so that week different, that that one week, one and a half week, I can't even remember what it was, but, um. It made, it did make a difference because that was.
Maybe.
That's, that week is when they went back in for another interview at Bedford and were offered the jobs. So.
Well, they obviously applied beforehand then.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, yeah, they they.
They would still have had the opportunity, right? So again.
They they were, they were processing for. Three departments and honestly, it was pretty, it was, it was a race, it was a race against time. They they, is, uh, one was actually processing for Maple Heights and she she was processing for Bedford and for us. Or it will interview for us, so, I mean, there was, they're all.
That and that the group that just left or got hired, I mean, that's, we're talking, that's the upper percentage of fire candidates too. I mean, they were all great. Like they they were scoring top three on each test, it was only a matter of time, but. But it's also still processing.
So that 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 was, that was just the concern was that, you know. The interviews, the interviews got put off. Because, you know, the comment was, I wanted to have the whole board involved, but then. Comes down to do the interviews, the whole board's not there. So it's like, well.
In the interest of moving it, trustee Asher said she had already been part of reviewing those candidates. So that was her choice to make.
Absolutely.
Um, is there anything that I provided you that you find unreasonable? Do you think what I provided you is accurate? Relative to my role, hopefully you understand my role better now. Okay.
And to actually piggyback on just bringing information to the board. You know, Chief Grosso Ball was very proud of the ISO certification. Was not even, so we got an email, but like that would have been a great agenda item to promote. And applaud the fire department's work. But like stuff like that would not happen, so we get the email. But like, bring it to the table because we love to publicly acknowledge something like that.
But he found out about, that ISO score came in like maybe just right before that. My, like, I am pretty positive, he called me all excited.
And and the big three, we got one, we did get one email and Monique did respond, I believe, she was the only one that did. You know, I didn't, I didn't respond either, um, I just figured there'd be some future follow up discussion, which kinda never really happens.
So I got a, just a couple more, and I'll let you have added if there's anything you wanna add, um. In the interviews are conducted in executive session, the information in that room is supposed to stay in that room, doesn't sound like all of it did. We can, uh, when we go back in, we can discuss some stuff further. But, um, two things that I can say to you. It, uh, Monique had noted that Jess said he wasn't able to ask any questions in the interview, that's not accurate, he did ask questions. And why did we interview top six instead of top three? I don't even know where what that question's about, that. Why did we not just say we're gonna interview the top three?
I don't know where that question came from, because our plan, the whole time, we had to interview the tops. Cause you had. To narrow it down to them three.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't, I'm not sure where that question came from. One. I thought it was top five. And I don't, um.
Give six.
Employees that were interviewed. Did feel uncomfortable about. Quite, uh, a question that was asked, but we can discuss that.
Talk that in there, yeah. Last thing. It was, it was a rumor saying I was gonna fire whoever cut the fence.
I don't know where that came from.
I never get heard that.
I don't know where that one came from.
There there has not been one member of this board whoever alleged they would fire any employee.
Yes, um, I was asked about that the other day and I said, I've never heard that one, that that has even been. That hasn't even been a rumor at in the station or anything, so I'm not sure where that even came from.
I don't remember us talking about.
No, I've never talked about that because it's a question, but that was not a firing.
Former Lieutenant Baxter brought that up, but he didn't say that, nothing about firing.
And was there a discussion about a walkout?
A walkout?
Yeah.
I wouldn't say we all would walk out, I'm just saying there would be people leaving. I I can almost guarantee that.
A lot, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people enjoyed working under Chief Grosso Ball. And with me being here, still being here. They enjoy still working here as long as. The officer corps stays.
I'd say there's, there's a. There's definitely a populace within the department that's kinda playing the the wait and see.
I I'm not gonna lie, and and. I won't. I'm not afraid to say.
It it it, unfortunately, and not to sway you or anything, but just putting it out there, it will depend on what. Who is the next permanent chief.
I a hundred percent.
I mean, there there are some names that we've heard and they're definitely gonna be.
I will run for those.
There's people out of here. And. There's a few of them I don't think will make your list hopefully, but yeah. It's just, and that that's the, that's the name of the game.
Yeah, we're we're all picking.
I think we're all in this weird.
The biggest thing, people are concerned of who's gonna be the next leader of the department and that's this.
I'll I'll say, yeah, like, and it's such a drastic change right now, I mean, you have a chief that stepped down. Sean's interim chief, we're kinda, we don't know what's gonna happen, we don't know who's gonna be the chief, we're not, you know, I'm not sitting here advertising Sean by any means, but. You know, but like. Say hypothetically, Sean doesn't get the chief spot. He stays assistant chief, there may be some people that move like that and they'll leave, there may be, you know, you bring in a certain chief from a certain place, from a certain city. Not going to the details. You'll have a lot leave, it's just certain. The criteria, I don't know, and then come the new year and if, you know, we're talking like, that's a whole different discussion for whatever, but regarding to all that stuff. That doesn't happen, you may have other.
It's it's the name of the game, when you get a department, new department head, he's gonna have his. You know, yes, the job needs to be done, but this is the way I wanna do it and.
And Johnny.
Fifteen years, so it's a, it's a huge.
It's me, actually, wait, here's the problem, you go.
Everybody, everybody knows everybody, or it's like that. The fire, the fire services, even though it's large, it's, it is a tight community, so, you know, word does travel around. And so when you hear that, you know, this person applied or whatever, and that's like, oh my god. That's, that's, of course, that's, that's the name of the game, so.
We're all union guys here, um. When we do go full time, there may be guys that leave officially when that full timer is hired and put on. The guys will leave because sometimes some union departments do not agree with the joint staffing.
At the end, that's that's.
Yeah, but that's you, but I'm just saying, but there are.
I don't think, there's really not any guy, any guys on that department that's that.
That's what I think, I don't think so. But just saying, that is a. It's it's.
Yeah, so that's. Yeah, so that's. That, it's great. There, there's not, there's not like a plan, like we're walking out of this department. It's more so, people are just concerned of where the. Future of the apartment is going and that's the way they're looking at it.
It's, it's, it's everything that I said at the beginning, you know, it's, it's this. Is, is, or the, is the balance, is the, is the scale balanced? Is it worth it?
Yeah.
You know, and.
This board. Is not against you guys and you, you need to understand.
That's why we definitely wanted to have this meeting, cause that's how, that's what we've been trying to either discern or. Relate to people like, we gotta figure out, are we the target on our back or? Do we need to just open up communication like we are today?
So we can. I don't know why you don't hold staff meetings and invite one of us, you know, hold regular staff meetings and invite one of us. We can't all come because.
You know, we can barely get, with all our full time jobs, we can barely get an officer meeting.
But anytime you want to.
Sure.
Send it up and you know.
Absolutely.
Well, that's, and I think right now we feel vulnerable and it's nothing you guys are doing, it's just because changing the guard, people leaving. I'm, I'm clear, like, we're not certain of what the future brings. To us right now, who's coming, who's going? And. I don't know, right now, we're just kind of, like I said, a lot of guys are gonna play it out. Sit it out, ride it out.
And I've done, I've talked to a lot of guys, you know, one on one down there and they're like, listen, I'm like, like. You know, cause I, you know, I hear, I, again, I don't get to hear everything either. So I go and ask everybody straight up like, hey, like, what's your, I don't know, is, you know, you're. They're like, you're here, so I'm like, I'm, I'm here, so.
I'm, I'm not, you, that's one thing, you can get the truth out of me.
Oh, yeah.
It's fine.
And I'm, unfortunately, sometimes I'm very straightforward, you know, and.
That's like, you'll get the truth out of me too.
So you, you have a pretty brutally honest officer group, so.
We don't have to always see eye to eye.
The most vocal one is currently not here.
He's very quiet until he's known.
All right, is there anything else you want to add here?
Yes, so I will say to you Sean, that since we met in July, I have been waiting on a call. For you to set up. Like your pick, three locations from some business off one hundred thirtieth. And three locations from Town Center, including Binky Commons for a ride along. And you told me that you would have somebody to get with me and coordinate dates and times that that has never happened. So to infer that I am targeting one business for a ride along, I think is really disingenuous. Uh, when you told me about all these, I was very intrigued by it and that is one of those places I want to see. Along with whoever else you may pick along one hundred thirtieth. So, um, the other thing that I was concerned about with the multi tenant buildings. Because you had your grease board up there and looked like Town Center was coming up September one or whatever.
Yeah, they've been doing Town Center this last couple of weeks.
Okay, and we talked about, you had two businesses identified. The donut shop and the barber shop. And so you even went into your computer system, you said, that's all the businesses that we have there. So I just was asking you, well, what about new businesses? There's been a lawyer's office up there for a few years. And you said you weren't even aware of it. So, you know, so now there's like a secondary concern. I guess, you know, just trying to understand how you discover new businesses, especially in a multi. Tenant building, which then makes, another question come to mind is, are you inspecting businesses? Are you inspecting buildings? Because that's can be two different things.
So on the inspection side, anytime a new business moves into the township or any city, village, anything on those lines. They're, they have to go through us, insurance, everything, they're, yeah, and if they don't, that's on them, then they're running, running with no insurance.
Is it the building owner or the business?
The business itself now, the building itself, because it is partitioned, each part of that building, that's where, so you have so many different. Categories of what businesses are.
So like, like in a, in a, in a mall, they're like, you know, twenty, let's say twenty stores in a mall. Who's responsible for protecting each of those stores? Is it the individual business or is it the, the person who owns the mall has to make sure?
The mall would have like their standards, so.
If we had one here.
If we have, yeah, like something that big, like the mall will have their standards up to fire code, building code, whatever, whatever that they put in their store. Then it falls in the state of Ohio's fire standards for when we go check and then depending on occupancy, that's where it gets. It gets weird because you could have, yeah, multi, like Binky Commons, there's food involved.
Falls under multiple.
Yeah, occupancy, so each one falls under then subcategories for that occupancy and that's where it gets. Kind of funky, um.
So, yeah, so like your mall perspective, like there, there's a fire code specifically for the mall. But then on top of that, then there's a fire code for the food court in the mall, for the restaurants.
Oh, really?
So like you said, subcategories within that.
Especially, yeah, like, i- it's, you know, we go up to. We go up to Aldi, there's a whole different standard for warehouses than there is the barber shop.
So that's your concern is that they're not getting the zoning information to know there's other entities?
But well.
The only information we receive is from the Medina County, um, planning. It's the only, it's only the ever.
Or, or I think you mentioned once in a while, the previous zoning inspector would give you a heads up, whatever that is, so, but.
Send us an email saying, hey, there's a new business, but it was.
You need to know that.
One of the outcomes of our meeting was to develop better communications between the zoning department and the fire department, whether it's on a quarterly basis or whatever. So that we can, in, through the zoning department can inform you as to new businesses. Or vice versa, if there's, you know, something we may. Not know, because sometimes people do things without, you know, making the proper applications. So at least there's that two way dialogue and that, that's kind of like what the whole purpose of this was to begin to open up that dialogue. I, to educate myself, would want to go for a ride along. I want to understand, cause like, I don't know what zoning or, I'm sorry, fire inspections are about. I mean, this, so like another question I had and you brought up, you know, what kind of notice you give to businesses and you say you don't. Because otherwise you wouldn't be able to catch them in violations. And I recall the conversation about finding somebody. Uh, basically living in one of those buildings, I think.
Yeah, we found somebody living in a commercial building off West one thirtyth. We've found, we have found people using extension cords as just regular outlets. That's how we find.
But, but, but on, but on the flip side, but on the flip side, I will say, because since that meeting, you know, I've had. Some business owners approached me questioning why you don't provide notice, cause in the past, they said you did. Cause like if they have a smoke detector that needs a battery, they would be, um, real eager to take care of that or a fire extinguisher. Before you show up and at least then, you know, we're talking about a business being in compliance instead of getting dinged.
Well.
So.
This riff balls, I'll, I'll, I'll say this, as in it's like. So, no, we're never gonna be. For a smoke detector. They're not getting shut. The problem with the businesses here, and I'll say this, and you know, bless our small businesses and everything, everyone thinks we're here to shut them down. I don't know why they think that. I don't know why they assume that we, they kind of, this kind of started with the old. Inspection and.
Two, three fire inspectors ago.
Yeah, um, we show up and they immediately think that we're just impeding. I do inspections every day at my other job. I just show up. They could deny me from coming in, that's fine. And I'll just tell them like, I'm not even gonna bother you. I'm literally gonna be in the background, you keep working. And I'll come back to you and let you know your violations. I'm not shutting you down, I'm not fining you. I'm not doing anything, I'll give you the violations that I see that day, like something, something big.
It's, it's an education.
Yeah.
But, and, and I don't know that the concern was that you would be shutting them down. But if, if it's like, um, they have customers or clients in the offices. That it's an intrusion and they feel that.
Not to be.
They would like to have notice.
They, they can, they can simply say, hey, like, hey, we're, we're busy right now, can you come back?
You're in, you're in a uniform with your, with your clip and I'm here to do a fire inspection, it's, it's.
But we're not kicking down the door here, we're not.
I guess the question would be, is there an issue with scheduling them instead of just showing up?
So the, the, the thing that we have found. Through the years is when you were, like, like I said, when you were scheduling. Like that extension cord that was being used in an outlet would be tucked, tucked away for the time being.
Hundred percent.
Until we. Until we do our inspection and then it, then it comes back out, right? This is. Doing this is how we're preventing. Accidents from happening. By going there and finding these issues. We're, like, I said, the, the big, the big things aren't gonna, so, okay, what we take a look at. Fire extinguishers, right? Our guys will go and take a look at the fire extinguisher, make certain one, making sure they're accessible. We have found there's been warehouses that put. Um, shelves in front of fire extinguishers. That's a violation, because nobody can access that fire extinguisher. If there was a fire, how are you gonna do that? Um, or they piled boxes and pallets in front of it and you know. You know, when you go there, they do, they, you know, it's usually, oh, well, we just put that there temporarily, but you know, then we, you. You make another visit back without making an announcement, guess what? Now it's still there.
Yeah, usually, like Sean said, we will call like now Aldi, because it's such a huge operation.
We give all these.
Yeah, and they have staff, they have, they have like their own almost inspector or.
They have an operations manager that actually walks through with us.
So, and you know, when you go there, there's no, even if you surprise them, it's so big that they're not gonna get whatever they have cleared all the way in time. Um, but you know, like, you know, you go up to, you know, mom, paws, whatever. And then you said someone sleeping on a mattress with a, you know, propane heater inside.
A whole, a whole apartment inside a commercial building.
Yeah, like, it's just not allowed. And we're not, we're not here to impede on anyone's job. Now, there's certain regulations, like we go to anywhere that's a medical place, we cannot go just walk in a room with. Their patient being seen, that type of violation, stuff like that. Like they said, they could deny us entry. We're not here to shut them down. We're not here to find them immediately. Now, if we come back after, we'll be like, hey, we'll give you two months to get this done. We come back and nothing was done. Okay, now we're gonna take this up to the state fire marshal and see what they have to say, especially if someone's being rude to us. If they're just nice enough to just let us, the easiest thing to do is just go, yeah, sure, you can come in and go, hey, you know, right now it's just not a good time, like, okay, well, we'll get back to you in a week. And then can we schedule, possibly schedule some from there or we're gonna show back up within a week.
Or it, it's something, something simple is, okay, if you had fire extinguishers around today, hey. You get these corrected, give us a call when they're corrected, we'll come back and check them out.
That's not the end of.
Our, our job is not there to impede on somebody. Our job is, our job is to go out. Find, you know, make sure all of our bill occupancies are safe and they're following the codes that need to be back. And educate them on the codes that need to be.
And, and I'm not an inspector yet, but that's the education thing too, cause like we talked about. Codes and everything. How many business owners actually read all the codes, right? Even if you did, you probably, if you did, great job. But it's also, you, so at work, we do like a company inspection, like we go out with the inspector just to see the building. Kind of a walk through, he does his paperwork and everything, we just kind of observe the, the. Uh, like the back storage areas of businesses that we don't normally get to see, so it's an education thing for the entire crew. So like what we've seen is like a lot of people, well, they know we can do that or we couldn't do that. It's like, oh. You caught them doing it, now, now they've been educated, like, you know, meet a fire panel keeper that's six feet back. You know, if you have sprinkler system, you gotta keep it so far down away from, they didn't know that, they just, you know, they just stacked some boxes or some toads back.
Not everybody's gonna be happy with that, but what we're doing is for the safety of. The visitors of this township going to these occupancies and along with.
But they can always say.
Not right now, I'm.
Today is not a good time. I remember going through the, uh, facility, the huge facility that has like thirty some businesses up in its corner. Yeah, back behind the church house. Years ago, and I'm like, one, I didn't even know there were that many businesses in here, but some of them were just like closets. And one was like a, I don't know if it's still there, like a skin peel.
Yeah.
And you just walk in, it's a chair and there was someone in there and she's like, I'm coming back later and. He's like, yes, but it's just, you just, in this small area, you have extinguisher, you have a detector. Yes, yes, okay, we're good. Cause there was a, a patient in there and it was, yeah, we can absolutely come by, but if you show me the tag, I don't have to come back.
Just, let me ask you, how did, where, where did you get the assumption that she didn't want the other businesses then?
What?
You, you were saying that she, uh, Trustee Angelman only wanted to go over to, over here.
She.
But she, she sent an email asking for the other.
When we had our meeting in person at the station, this, there were specific questions asked strictly about Binky Commons. That's where I got that assumption.
Well, where she's asking, do you know about the other places?
Also, when, when we talked about doing the ride along. I had mentioned doing a ride along up on, on the West one thirtyth and she said, that she also said I would also still, I'd like the tag.
Oh, so not just that?
Not just that, but it.
Not what you said, bud, you gotta, yeah.
So, one of my other concerns and it, and it emanated from the Binky Common discussion, but it's also applies to any other. Um, Town Center location that has apartments up on the second floor. As well as the senior apartments. My question to you was about. How are you made aware of occupancy counts for living spaces in the business district? Because if there should be anything that occurs, you know, how do you know somebody's living there? And I kind of got the response back was, well, you don't know how many people live in a house, so you know, it's kind of residential. But these aren't necessarily residential and.
The apartments above, we have no.
That's not a business, it's a residential.
So you don't, and there, because it's in the business district, what about just the number of occupants?
Yeah, wouldn't you want to know if there was a residence there though?
We would love to, but.
We can, we can't, that's not a.
Right, like we cannot do, so.
I mean. When we go to do our inspections.
Let's say that you had to do a run to that residence and how would you? How would you know where it was if?
Because when they call nine one, they'll say, you know, it'll say, it'll come in and apartment above. Whatever, the apartment of. Thirteen whatever Ridge Road.
Like now, will we, so this is once again.
Cause we, we, recently, we have had calls at the.
You cannot inspect like a residential building, even if it's connected to a business or whatever. That has its own, like you could do whatever fire standards in your, if you want to store propane tanks in your living room.
Yep.
You can't. I mean, it's dangerous, but like I can't come there. Now, if we go on a call and we see that.
Yep.
Now we're talking, we could get other matters involved because it's a safety hazard at that point to us. But we can't just show up at someone's house, we can't just walk in an apartment, even if we had like a big apartment, so we had bigger apartments.
Well, let, let's talk about, the senior apartment, senior apartments, we talked about that.
They, those are still residential.
Individual residential structures. Now, if it was a single built structure, we would inspect like the hallways, the corridors, the basements. Of like, say, like a large high rise apartment building. We're checking the extinguishers, we're doing the whatever, but we will never enter someone's house. Place of residence there.
And I'm, I'm not talking about entering the, the place of residence, I'm talking about just having occupants, in, information, you know, like the fact that. There is or isn't, or how many, I mean.
Again, when.
I'm just cur, you know, I, okay, this is like an education process, and that's why, you know, I'm over there explaining to me how, you know, how and why and.
We do, we do what we call pre incident plan, okay? So we got, we got pre plans established, so when the inspectors do go to. You know, Foster's tavern to do the inspection, they do know that there's an apartment up, up above and they, they can ask the owner like, hey, you know. Do you have anybody living in, in the apartment up above? And they'll say, yeah, you know, you know, okay, how many? And they, we can put that in our pre incident plan, but as for like an actual. Anything that has to do with like code, there's, there's nothing in.
No, but I would think just from, you roll up on a building after hour, be nice to know, babe, not somebody might be.
Absolutely.
You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely. And, and again, that's why I always say, we plan for the worst, right? Um, and I, I, I even, I tell the guys. Our best time to be able to preplan all of our residents is when, when we go on EMS calls and we see what the, the houses look like. I, they made me, when guys go on squad calls, they make me aware, hey, you know what? We have order conditions at this address. Okay, hey, cool. We put, we, we put a flag in, I tell dispatch, hey, put flag this address because there's order conditions. It might be a change of tactics. Same thing with like, so those guys are going on.
I'm not a total hoarder, but I'm close. My wife says I'm one gene away.
But you know, we, we have, we have found residential hazards that.
Yeah.
When guys go on calls. Again, we can't, I can't, we can't.
It sounds to me though, like sharing the zoning, kind, kind of creating a. Line of communication.
Yep.
That way your guys are finding out what's where and yeah.
Yes.
And educating back and forth, you know, that's all just part of that, so, I mean, that, that's the goal. And educating back and forth, you know, that's all just part of that, so, I mean, that, that's the goal.
More about the country, cause. So unfortunately, a lot of times we feel like we're behind eight ball. At the new business, you drive by, you're like, man, when did that change?
Yeah, a, a lot of times we find the new businesses by, again, by my inspectors, they want out and driving around.
Same closed roads. You know, like. You go on a squad call in the middle of the night, like, yeah, your road is closed. This is.
I, I do get emails from the state, I don't get the emails from the county.
We could get that.
From river closing right now?
I got, I got.
I sent that.
Oh, yeah, I got the river, no, 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 but I'm saying, I, I actually get emails, it's always. I don't get the county, like, if the county were to close a road, I don't get those emails. Like, madly, that was a surprise. I think.
I didn't know it was closed?
It was.
You would think that would be like a, you know what? I'm gonna let someone from this town know.
And the way I found out was trying to work.
Right.
That, that would be nice, I, I will look into that.
Fairly, if you guys have questions, especially with inspection stuff, I mean, we have like. We'll show you the book, it's.
Of course, things gotta look, things, um. Things kind of took a surprise on me to get, got a little more busy for me. I wasn't anticipating taking on my new roles quite yet, but, um.
I figured that would have been part of the reason, so I wasn't gonna push, but I, that was my expectation, I do wanna make.
I, I, I took on two more new roles within the department, so.
We do have our inspection bureau, we have like, how many inspectors?
Uh, one, two, three, four, technically, cause that's five, but.
So we have four inspectors, um.
Oh, I thought there were only two.
No, no, I have two, two or two young guys that are like.
That's their main, which one is going to be one of our full timers. Um, so there will be more consistency with. Inspect, like being on top, every third day, you're gonna have a full-time inspector and being able to go to these businesses.
I have a lieutenant that's in charge of the inspection bureau, he's in charge of the inspectors, I'm like, well, the bureau, but he's in charge of the inspectors and then, under him, there's two. Main ones that are out and about and then.
Other guys still.
Other, the other two fill in for them if they're, if they're in their absence, like if they're on, you know, extended vacation, we need to get something done on the inspector's side, but, so. That's how, that's how we kind of operate, um. Just. Yeah, the other two are more villains than anything, because if I had four inspectors going around constantly.
The best payroll would be. We were saying, like, some of these businesses, it's hard, especially up there on, um. On center, okay, what is that, root dialysis and all that, that is rotating so much. The landlord there, whoever owns, I forget his name, but whoever owns that, I think there's been people in and out of there. In one month, you know, someone can get literally for storage or something, but they'll say it's LLC, whatever. And we're knocking on the door, no one's there, no one's there, we're calling.
And again, we never, we never get a change of business notice. We don't, we're not made aware until we actually go out and see it.
Unless something's being like remodeled.
Yep.
Or.
Yeah, or the plans have to go to the.
Yeah, it goes through you guys and then the county and blah, 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 like, all that, then we, then we find out, and cause they'll have to go through us.
So like, I, I, and I, it's, well, the latest project that I've been made aware of that's changed was first day school supplies, that they took over that PPW building. They also have their, their warehouse up front and the, the addition to the warehouse in the back. So that's a project that I've been made aware of from the county because they had this.
Right, right.
Anybody else that, you know, goes into opportunities and it changes from hoops guru to now an indoor baseball, we have no clue.
Right, and I, and I'm kind of a process oriented person, so I, you know, because if you have the processes. In place and you have that communication going, then hopefully that will remedy that.
Absolutely.
And sometimes likewise, you know, zoning doesn't hear about things, so, I mean, it's kind of like, if, between the two of us, we can have a picture of what the township looks like, because the goal is. Protection, safety of the township.
Absolutely.
And making sure just, you know, everything is up there in compliance, so.
Do you have anything else for?
Nope, that's all I have.
Um, we will go into executive session, so you guys will never hang around once we come out. I wanna thank you for coming out today, appreciate it. I hope you have a better understanding. Thank you for being reasonable.
Nice meeting.
I, I got, yeah, we're good.
I said, we're.
We're, we're, we're all here for the same reasons, I think, so.
Absolutely.
Don't take time.
Yep.
Change your drive. All right.
Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.